Everybody ready? Everybody ready?
Ready.
Ready? All right. Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, July 2nd, 2018, 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. Could we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to sign Treasury Warrant 1 and 27? Hand payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion for meeting minutes of Wednesday, June 6th. That was the public hearing.
Motion accept.
Second.
Discussion? Just one tiny thing, Abby. It's just a select bore at one point on the third line down. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. And for June 18th.
Same motion. Motion accept.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. We're gonna move right on. Chief Monaco, come on down.
Good evening.
Good, Chief.
Good. So, the town and the Rutland Police Sergeants Union, we successfully negotiated a contract, and Vice President Troy Chauvin is here this evening to sign said contract.
Fantastic.
The contract has been approved as to legal form by Labor Council.
Motion to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll take those.
Jeff sign, and then...
There's a lot of paper going around here.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you.
I wanna thank the Sergeants Union for cordial, respectful negotiations. We made it through pretty well. Thank you.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Please convey our appreciation to the Sergeants.
He will.
Thank you.
See you around, sir.
Sergeant, pleasure. Thank you.
Are you done?
No. According to this, I'm giving you a 4th of July update.
Excellent.
So far, for all the festivities I've had, officers present at everything, the Junior Olympics, the bonfire, the bike and doll carriage parade, those are events that we traditionally didn't really have anybody at, but we've had people there each time just to, you know, meet with the public and get to know people and have a good time. Road race as well. We usually have a pretty big presence at the road race. That was Saturday night, went off without a hitch. And then tomorrow, obviously, we get the fireworks. We have just about the entire department working. We're gonna have a joint command post set up with the fire department right in front of the Public Safety Building. And we got a plan set up with Dispatch Director Moriarty to have a full communications plan right in the center of town, so should go off quite smoothly. Traffic's always been an issue post-fireworks, so what we're considering this year is blocking off all inbound traffic to the center of town right when the fireworks end. So keep traffic from coming in, dump everybody out, and then open it back up. And we'll see how that works. And the 4th of July parade, standard thing we've always done, we have officers at all the crosswalks, all the swats where we have to stop traffic, and then we're gonna work with Gary getting some detour signs and detorn traffic through Kenwood, up Maple, around that way. So, again, should be no issues. Any questions on police operations?
Be alert.
Okay. We will be.
For tomorrow night, you have people on bike, right?
Yes. In addition to all the traffic posts, we have two bicycle patrol officers, two foot patrol officers.
Okay. And has the heat been an issue yet? The road race, I was amazed that I...
The turnout was a little low, but everybody did okay.
Okay.
Yeah. We're gonna have water at the command post, and we're gonna have a cooler and a cruiser to deliver to the different traffic posts, too.
Great.
Did you ever look at a summer uniform or any type of bicycle? I don't know if you guys...
We do have a detail uniform, like a high-visibility traffic shirt, that they're authorized to wear tomorrow, just 'cause they're all gonna be out on the road at some point, especially at night, so...
Nice.
That's... Other than that, traditional uniform style. No shorts.
No shorts?
No shorts.
Even on the bikes?
Oh, bikes can wear shorts.
All right.
It's a little hard.
That's it.
Thanks, Nick, for having everybody at the events. I know there's been a lot of positive social media feedback, so thank you very much.
No problem. They all enjoy it, too.
Awesome. Well, thank you, and tell them we said thank you also.
I will. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was easy. Chief Nipe, it's early. Are you ready to go anyway?
Yeah. Okay. Just to follow up on what Nick had to say on 4th of July, everything is all set for the fireworks. Permit process went through with no problem. We expect the Fire Marshal to be here sometime between 4:00 and 5:00 to do a site inspection before they light the fireworks off. The only thing that's remaining to do that DPW will take care of in the morning is the snow fencing along Palmigusset by the ball field area. Other than that, we've had no significant issues. I talked with the ACO officer today. Any dogs we have in the kennel will be moved and brought to our neighbor communities under mutual aid, so that will be taken care of. We do have Fire and EMS details staffed for tomorrow, both for fireworks and for anyone on Memorial Field. They will be staffing the all-wheel-drive Ranger, so if you see the buggy running around, that's what it's for. Other than that, department updates. We ended the fiscal year in the black. We did very well. We're turning back close to $20,000 in expended funds. Ambulance revenue, we just got the posting today, I think we're $444,000, just over, in collectibles for FY '18, so that's higher than expected. I will be coming forward in the next month or two with our annual write-offs and adjustments. I'll be working with Dan to get that all taken care of as well. Call volume, as you know, the first quarter of the year, we were slow, and it's starting to catch up. It's either feast or famine, and it's been very, very busy lately. Other than that, last time I was here, we had talked about the DCR grant that we were awarded. That part has been, all the equipment's been purchased, paperwork's been submitted to the state for reimbursement. That grant is closed out. We also, at Annual Town Meeting, we had a capital item for new chief's vehicle. That grant has been awarded by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services to purchase said vehicle. Price of the vehicle was $35,904. The grant was for $36,577.
Nice.
Just under. Also, we expect in the next several weeks is the Emergency Management Preparateness Grant awards to be coming out shortly. This year's grant purchase for this will be for EMS technical equipment. In this day and age, it's unfortunate that we have to buy ballistic vests for EMS providers, so both ambulances will be equipped with that. They will be red, and they will say "Paramedic" on the back, so it'll be very easily distinguished between police and fire personnel.
They'll be kept in the rig?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So they will be available. Also, at the Annual Town Meeting, we had the capital purchase of a new ambulance. I had formed a committee to start reviewing different vendors. They went to the New England Fire Chiefs Expo two weeks ago down in Connecticut. It was their opportunity to really see all the different vendors in one location. They picked a top three that they're looking at, and they will be coming in to meet with them very shortly, the next week or so. All the vendors are on the state bid list, so procurement should not be an issue. As the dry weather approaches, we are a little concerned with fireworks and possible brush fires tomorrow, so we're just gonna keep an eye on that. And as you know, it's later, it's actually posted a little bit later, but I'll talk about it now. Due to the high heat, we did open a cooling center today. Due to the library being closed today, we offered it at the fire station just to see if there was any interest. If there was gonna be a large turnout of people, we would've opened this building and staffed this building. We had three or four people in during the day, stranded motorists, car breaking down. Police officer brought them up to the station to cool down while they waited, things of that nature. Tomorrow, this building will be available during normal business hours as a cooling station. I talked to the Council on Aging this morning. They've had no requests for assistance over the weekend, and I just told them to keep an eye out if they hear or see anything to let us know. And also, just wanna bring it up to the public that, you know, this is the time to check on your neighbors, to make sure everyone's doing okay. Just follow up with that. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have. Oh, one last thing. We did end the year with our public fire prevention program. We did bring the safe trailer to Glenwood Schools, and we did all the, I think we did some of the daycares as well in town. So it was a great opportunity to round out the year, reinforce what they learned back in October, and send them out for the summer. So, other than that, that's all I have.
I saw your post about the cooling center on social media. Is that worth a reverse 911 call tomorrow morning, or...
We can, I can discuss it with Mike in the morning.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely.
Because I don't, I mean, how many people would've seen it, really? And then...
Well, I don't know. It hit 2,000 by noon, so...
Okay.
But I'm just saying.
You have a lot of views from outside of town, so I don't know if the hit 2,000 thing really counts.
I know they did it on the town's Facebook page.
Yeah.
And I know...
You mean the website? I don't know.
It's on town Facebook.
Facebook, yeah.
A reverse 911 might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have room, Gary? What's on the sign right now?
The sign has been relocated.
The sign's been relocated?
Yes.
I asked that same question today.
Lip sync now, right? Yeah.
Yeah. We were out looking for it today, and it was missing, so...
Okay.
And then Gary drove by and told us that he stole it, so...
Okay. Is it a secret?
No.
Well, I need to be stoked. We remove it every four weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a way for handicapped access and so on and so forth.
Is it worth putting it, since they're going to have their command post, is it worth putting it with them for tomorrow and Monday so they can...
You won't see it because you'd be blocking the access to Public Safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anywhere to put it that it's visible, useful? No?
No.
No? The grass in front, where the...
That's where we packed it. That's where the handicap park. There's all the grass in front of the Public Safety Building.
Where the, well, no, I was thinking where the flagpoles are.
Oh, that's where the command post is set up.
Oh. Okay, so no, we don't want the sign. Is that...
That's correct.
Not in front of the station.
Not in front of the station.
Not in front of the station, and we can't think of anyplace else to put it?
No.
Okay. And that's why it's gone? Thank you.
Ethel Olson.
Does anybody have any... Yeah?
Last day of school, Sheila and I were at the field day at CTMS, and here comes the fire chief with his ladder truck pulling up. There was, how many kids? 120, 130 kids out there for the last day of school. It was a scorcher, just like today. And chief put the ladder, got up in the bucket, shot the water out in the field. I think it was a memorable experience, and it was your day off, so...
Yep. We had a good time.
It was noted. Well done. Very impressive and very appreciated, and made some good memories, so keep up the good work, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will.
And Police Department, too. They were out there in the scorching heat, representing as always, you know? I want you to know, we take it for granted. It was above and beyond, especially my, with the school resource. She's out there. Visible.
I'll let her know.
Yeah, please. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
Onward. So at 6:30, Karina was not going to be here, but I think you all received her update regarding the pool opening. Did anybody read that memo? Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Sorry.
What I just wanna put out there, and it's more of a thanks than anything, is the pool opening maybe didn't go as smoothly as she would've liked, but the way she kept the public notified, really got the explanations out there as to exactly what was going on. Thank goodness we hadn't hit the heat wave yet. I think it really went a long way to keeping people calm, knowing that everybody was working on it. Pool looks fantastic now. Certainly, it's been packed the last couple of days, so I think the biggest thing also, too, is for us to remember here, in particular as a board, that Recreation has been managing that pool, and yet it is a town resource. So, a lot of money has been expended by a Recreation revolving fund that, in other communities, is under the levy, in particular for some of their capital issues, which they've had in the past and have had this year as well. Obviously, things like opening the pool, running it, and staffing it, I understand that to be a Recreation issue, but when we talk about resurfacing, when we talk about putting in that handicapped chair for access, it's probably, yeah. And so some of the issues that they had this year with repairs that were needed and things that they're doing to do an upgrade, I think, hopefully, when we go back into our budget cycle in the winter, which seems very far away right now, we can kind of make an effort to make sure the CIPC has their eye on that as well, as an infrastructure and something that might need some help. So we appreciate Karina's memo to us as far as the pool opening goes. Appreciate that the pool is open, and hopefully, everyone will enjoy it, so we thank them for that. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Quick one. Dick Williams Overlook.
Thank you.
There was an incident, and MWRA had called me and said there were some rocks missing out of their wall right next to the gate down below down here, a Holbrook property, which I told Officer Troy a couple of days ago. And he's gonna look into it. He's checking the other end of it, and they were moving today down there. And I went up to get online. GIS doesn't even show that right away, whether it's Easeman or it is, as Gary said, it is owned by the MWRA. That's where our sewer line runs through there. And so I've gotta go up and see Diane tomorrow. I hope she's gonna be in. And I found so many other problems on the computer.
So are you talking about the property card, which is that property is...
The assessors, the assessors' GI.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
So that's co-owned, right? Blair and Trustee's Reservations?
Blair and Trustee's own the property except that is its own separate entity where the sewer line runs down through there.
Okay. And the MWRA didn't offer anything in terms of, I mean, they called you proactively...
Yeah, Dan knows me. Can you get ahold of, you know, and just say, somebody's swiping the rocks down here and don't know what the story is, if somebody's trying to get in there, and four-wheelers or what, you know, just let the police know, and we'll see what we can do. It just seems rather odd that somebody would be taking rocks out of there, because...
So was it, was it, did you see it?
Yes, I have.
So was it a particular location that looked like it, they were trying to...
You know, there's a yellow fence down there, a pole on either side of it.
You mean as you drive in from Main Street?
When you drive by it, you can look right at it.
Yep.
And you'll see the stones on both sides of the fence right there.
So you think it was an access issue? They weren't just trying to steal field stones?
In all honesty, I think that's what they were doing.
Which?
Stealing the law.
Field stone.
Somebody's trying to make a, maybe a fire pit or something like that.
Okay.
But, I've been wrong so many times, it probably could be accessible. Why not just go up, you know, another 50 feet, go up and around and back down?
Did you suggest to the MWRA that they, do they have field cameras?
They would have resources.
Yeah. Let's get a field cam.
Well, let's put it this way. Maybe they will now, but they hadn't had any problems in there for, I don't know, how many years.
But now they do.
Now they got a situation.
Okay. Are you, are you comfortable calling Dan and asking him?
Heck, yeah.
Okay.
No problem. I would.
Okay.
So, I just thought I'd let you know about the Board of Assessors, though. I mean, you know, I am a little upset that there was so many things wrong with the mapping and on the computer, so, and they just had it taken care of the first of the year, so I don't know what's going on.
What do you mean? Had it taken?
They had a lot of problems, which they had, you know, the person who took the bid for upgrading the GIS.
Oh, oh, oh.
And to me, it's bad.
Okay. Okay.
We'll see what happens, but, you know, to me, when people wanna know the situation or get on, you start looking all over the place.
What else is missing on it?
Well, I don't think the data's reliable, actually. In some cases, I just don't think it's reliable.
Can we put that on an agenda for maybe in a month? Because obviously, we have that letter where we reached out to MWRA regarding access to Quabon, so I think there's a lot of channels there, no pun intended, that we wanna keep open and let them know that we're concerned, and I would love to see them put trail cams up, personally. Okay? Thank you.
Start it in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Other than that, I was supposed to thank at least three groups today, so I'm thanking you people for all that you are doing, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what Gary does, and Abby.
Those are your three for the day?
That's my three for the day.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you.
And Dick, we appreciate you and all you do to keep us in the know.
Some of these days, I gotta quit.
No, you won't.
No. Not yet.
No, you won't.
Gary, you're up.
Okay. Thank you, Dick. And thanks for applying for the DPW Supercharge.
Okay, you got a few things on here, I see, and I didn't put this first one on for the water main break on Glenwood Road, so was there questions regarding that?
I have a question mainly because, and probably a lot of people saw what was going on but weren't necessarily personally affected. I happened to see, and I wasn't really affected, but be involved in what happened with the school opening that morning. So do you mind giving us a timeline? What happened? Because obviously, you've had water main breaks before. We've always, you've always, your team has always managed to fix the problem. This was clearly enormous. Can you give us the timeline of what happened?
Sure. It was quite possibly the biggest one that I've seen.
Okay.
We lost a lot of water. I did contact Police Fire Margaret Wayne Dispatch at about 5:45, 5:30 AM to send out the reverse 911. There was a delay in that. Can't explain that. It started as a minor break, but once we started taking the earth off of it and realized it was coming from under the sidewalk, and what had happened was it was a 12-inch main that the cap had busted off of. So once that was exposed, we lost so much water that it didn't have the pressure anymore to push it down the hill by the cemetery and back up the hill, and that's why it affected the rest of the schools. However, once I found out there was low pressure at Glenwood School, I went down to the school and told them they had to call school off because it's a health, it's a health risk, and that's a lot. No water, no school. Fortunately, it was the last day of school. It was half-day. Unfortunately, they were probably most on their way, and I do apologize for that, but we had no better way to do it. We had to close the school, so... And it was probably, well, not probably, it was a 12-hour job to get it fixed. There's many, many valves in that area of the road because of water lines from the tank going up north on Glenwood, obviously, back out to Main. So there's a lot of valves that we had issues with and locating with because they were all underwater to get them all shut down. But once we did, it was a relatively quick fix, and I'll thank the town of Holden for sending people with us, in the ditch with us, to help us repair that, so...
How old was that line?
Excuse me?
How old is that line?
That line is probably, I'm gonna say 50 years old, because it was one that was capped years ago when new lines were put in.
Oh.
So...
I have a question. I drove, I just by happenstance drove by that Thursday night before at like 8 o'clock, 7:30, 8 o'clock, and I saw it, there was water running out of something, and I think some of the crew had just gotten there. They were just starting to dig. Was that, at that point, not known that it was a water main break? Why? If they were working on it, if there was clearly something happening at 8 o'clock the night before until 5:30? I just am curious.
You're right, and I did get that call.
Yeah.
But it was a relatively minor leak at that time.
Okay.
So I made the decision with the employees in the Water Department to hold off till morning when we had daylight.
Yeah. I just, like I said, I saw them working at that point, and then obviously, got the phone call that school was...
And no residences or anything were affected at that time.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we got the Main and Maple intersection. I met with Jason Benoit of MassDOT last week, and I'm sure no one's noticed, but we took the directional sign that was the hindrance to view, closest to Main, out. We combined the directional sign for northbound traffic and the stop sign to be at the northernmost point of the island. So those two signs are now gone. The directional Mass Highway sign for their route and town directions will be moved back south four feet. I told them I would work with them on that intersection. We're gonna remove all the field stone that's in it and all the garbage, and we're gonna put cobblestone in it, so it's gonna be a cobblestone island, and we'll be able to put in a half keg, if you will, or wine barrel, but it has to be in the ground somewhat, otherwise they call it a projectile, and that's not allowed. So I told MassDOT that we will help with the work, so we'll start taking the stuff out after, after the 4th of July, but I noticed a big difference just with that, with sign replacement. I don't know if anybody else did, but that's happening.
We have cobblestones? That's great.
I might have.
Okay.
Let's see. New hire. We had a new gentleman start today with Margaret's approval, Steven Nuttall, so we have a new, one of the full-time spots are finally filled. We're still down, still down two, actually, three, and the five that Mr. Clark is gonna[1563.33] give me from years past, so. Glenwood School sidewalk construction is ready to go. I just wanna make sure, Margaret, you know this best with 30B, that we're below the threshold so we can purchase that with sound judgment and not have to go out for the bidding process.
You have three, you have to do three quotes?
We have, yeah. Well, we had one that didn't respond, and we had another price, but certainly the one we do have is far...
Yeah, you use your record, your record of quotes, and then just record everything, and if they don't respond, just note that?
Yep, so I mean, obviously, this is the time, year to do that when school's not in session, so I just have to do a little bit more digging with OSD and Chapter 30, so I'll keep you in the loop with that.
Gary, that's the one on the side of the building, right?
Excuse me?
That side entrance where the hill is?
Yeah.
That's the one? Okay.
Yeah, that's gonna come out, I think that's the fifth grade?
Fourth.
The fourth grade wing, that's gonna come out and go in front of the building and join the other handicapped access ramp by the main entrance.
Okay.
All right, I think that's the third wing, right?
The farthest wing, the one that juts out closest to the parking lots and the playground is fourth grade, and then fifth grade comes out just forward.
Yeah, but they'll be all, yeah, they'll be adjourned and cut that, where the picnic tables are, they'll cut that area diagonally and head to that other door, so they have a handicap access ramp. Okay?
Is there any way, as part of the project, to fix the very front door area sidewalk? The ramp part of the, you know what it's...
Yeah, I did talk to Karen about that, so hopefully now that school's out, we can get in there with some SAC reader or SAC 45 to fill in the voids and draw it out.
Thank you.
And the other one is the primary school parking lot. As you know, the article was changed in the wording, so we can use that money now. That, again, I don't want to have to go out to bid because initially, a year ago we started that, I just had to ask around for prices to see what it would cost, so we knew what process we would have to take as far as 30B goes. But I do have a very good price to do that, and hopefully that'll be below the threshold too. I did have that bid, another that did not respond, and I'll have to grab one more company, one contractor to come and take a look at it and see.
Again, I think because of the in-kind work that's going to be done there, I think that's going to fall within the quote, the three quote.
And I agree. And the only other thing I have is Margaret and I had a conversation with Bethany Card and Sean Naven of MWRA, and I started this process in 2016, and Beth confirmed that, that this process had started. And this was for the opportunity with cause to tap into the Quabin. So they have several operations, and Margaret's familiar with this, and the only two that really affect us is Op. Number Five and Op. Number Ten. Op. Number Five would be for an emergency water use hookup only, and they also have a temporary hookup, but that falls under Op. Five, but Op. Ten is for permanent hookup, and we can decide how much we want to use, there's a cost by the gallon. And I think the reason, and I think Margaret agrees, the reason we went for Op. Ten is because either/or we'd have to put in the plumbing. So if we're gonna pay for all that plumbing, we might as well join a club, and there is a cost to that. The last time when I talked to Pamela Heidel, that was just something that we'd have to come up, get the cash and come up front, but now, two years later, there is a 20, I think 20 or 25 years, 0% loan that we can get through them to do this. We have to, we have to discuss which way we want to go, what kind of water usage we're talking about. Obviously, the pump house out on 68, the house is there, so we would have to put the pump and the plumbing in to the water treatment plant. And the other area on Bernard, there is no, there is no house there, so we would have to pay for the construction of a pump house, if you will, and also the pump. So I think it's, and it's probably about the same distance from either of those pump stations to the water treatment plant. So probably be better, I think, to go on 68, because we don't have to pay for the cost of the pump house, we just have to pay for the cost of the house, I mean the pump, I'm sorry. And then we have to plummet from there to the water treatment plant because it still has to be treated. Okay, so Margaret and I are setting up an appointment with their engineers who are coming out to speak with us and see what we have to do to get this started. So we did talk about this. Most of you probably remember, we talked about this several years ago to see what it costs. We don't have a fixed cost on it yet, but I'm sure we will.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it'll be costly, but it'll be a water supply, another water supply, more than what we have.
So we have the ability to look at both the emergency tie-in and the additional, you know, the additional water supply. So we're gonna be meeting with the engineers and the individuals we spoke with, and also we've, Dick, you know, we recently became a housing choice community, but they have opened their capital grant for housing choice communities, which could very well, depending on the timeliness of the information we get, of the financial information we get, we may be able to avail ourselves of grant funding under that particular program to do any tie-ins that we need to do, so.
I think, so everybody knows, and I think you do, I think the water supply we have now is fine, as long as we were able to keep that water supply as it is with no additional draw over the next, who knows how long? Well, if we get, it'd take years still, at least six years to get to the max yield at 550, but there's a lot of work, there's a lot of cost associated with that to get there. So I'm happy with our water supply now, and what we're permitted for and what we're drawing, I'm worried about the growth, and how many people are gonna want that water supply.
I mean, Gary, six years, it's a blink of an eye.
Hmm.
Uh, did you get some sense, and honestly, Skip, I can't remember, I remember having this discussion, but I don't remember why we stopped having the discussion. Was it part, at the time of us talking about whether we would do a sewer treatment plant, we were kinda going whole hog and we looked at it...
We were doing all at once.
Yeah.
We did both at once, and there was a lot of money involved. There was a lot of cost, there's gonna be a lot of cost.
And maybe that's what it was.
That's always the base of our discussions.
So it was, it's too much money, oh well...
That's enough to shut down a conversation once in a while.
Yeah, oh well, okay, so you kinda threw out a 25-year loan, what are we talking here? Not our infrastructure costs, the cost that they're gonna charge us, what was that?
Well, we won't know that until we meet with the engineers.
We have no idea.
Because we have to base, part of their cost is obviously by the gallon. Do we want to go for what we're permitted for, 370,000 gallons a day, and just use that for our water supply and keep Mushka Pog as it is for emergency use? Or do we want to just make up the difference when we're approaching our permitted amount and put X amount of gallons over the top of that to get to our max yield, for instance, to get to 550 from 370? So that's something you guys, the commissioners, have to decide, the gallons that you're looking at. I'd just like to keep, if you're gonna, if you're gonna pay the money to tie in, you might as well use what you can. That's the way I look at it.
So the cost for the tie-in is strictly because of the growth, the population growth and the new housing growth that's coming in?
Right.
By the builders. Why don't we have the builders pay for the tie-in?
I'm with you.
Is that a second?
I'm with you. Or, I mean, we can just, you know, as, obviously, we know the water sewer moratorium's in effect, but we can, how long is that gonna stay in effect? We don't know. Can we have new builders put in septics and wells? Sure we can, if we don't have the supply, and if we don't have the allocation in the sewer lines, sure, of course we can.
I mean, that's, I think that's a valid conversation, is at what responsibility, how much is the town on the hook for, for this demand because of, because of all these new houses, specifically the Bryce Lemon and whatever else is out there? Yeah, how can that cost be traded? I mean, we're looking for a solution, but is it the existing taxpayer's responsibility right now to bear all this cost for this new plumbing, as you say? Which is a lot of coin.
Yeah, and the problem with that, the big problem with that, Jeff, is it would be shared by the users only. You're not gonna have the whole town paid for just the user's supply. There'd be a cost, except for still here, there'd be a cost associated with it.
Even beyond that, users who are newly connected using that connection, those are the only ones that can be assessed the betterment, not the existing users, so...
Let them hook up to it.
Well, unless, unless, if it was, yeah, I mean, if it was an emergency backup for the entire water supply system, maybe there's a way. But impact, impact fees, for example, have been deemed to be illegal, so you'd have to, have to be, either, it would either be betterments or some other creative way to assess user charges.
But Gary, this was an interesting discussion. You basically said, why go with OP-5 when you have to put in the plumbing anyway, you might as well go for 10? But the reason to not go for 10 would be to say, we can see where growth is, and we're going to know in the spring where growth ends up, right? The manage, the growth study is going to show us our build-out numbers. Our build-out numbers are predicated on availability of water. So if our availability of water doubles or more because of access to the Quabin, then our build-out numbers are different versus what you just said, which is, we go OP-5 purely for the emergency access when something, God forbid, happened to Mushka Pog.
You could do something like phase in, but to Gary's point, the infrastructure has to be paid for no matter what.
Yeah.
But if the board decided that it could be phased in, so they'd start with this, you know, this emergency tie-in, an emergency connection in the event that something happened to Mushka Pog, and then begin your assessments for full...
Yeah, I think it's a much easier sell. I think if you've got a tough sell, if you're just gonna tell people, the users, that you're gonna order town or emergency services, that you're just putting, paying for all this infrastructure and plumbing just in case.
Just, yeah. Can we get some numbers first? I mean, just...
Yeah, we're supposed to be meeting, they've already forwarded some information to the engineers to collect some data for our meeting that's supposed to happen in the very near future?
Yeah, I expect all those meetings are gonna take place after the, after the 4th.
Okay.
But before the 31st.
Yeah.
And can I just, can I just say to the point about have everybody go on wells, then, like, I'm on well, and I think it's a point of concern for those of us on wells that there's only so much water there also, right? So I don't necessarily think that saying all these new constructions aren't able to tie into public water is, that they need wells is necessarily the solution either, because there's still gonna be a water problem at some point. I...
They're drawing from the water.
Right.
Where the water's sore underground.
Right.
Does OP-5 shut the door to OP-10?
No, it does not.
No. No, but still, you have to sell that, as we're just putting, we're putting this in just in case.
I'd like to see the numbers first. I mean, how big of a deal is this? Is this a shutdown for...
This is a big deal.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
At our meeting, we should be getting numbers, they were putting together a lot of...
Yeah, and even said something about a temporary access, just temporary.
Yeah.
But still, temporary access, you gotta put, you gotta put the infrastructure in.
Why would anyone get temporary access?
Emergency, so DEP actually recommends that towns have a, have an emergency tie-in within a budding community or with some other, some other reliable water source, so town doesn't have that at the moment.
No.
No.
Okay. It's, I'm glad it's, it's a huge conversation, but I'm glad we're having it, we have to have it. Five, six years.
And I am too, but we've had the conversation before.
And we tossed it aside for money.
And you're exactly right, we were talking about a wastewater treatment plant and additional water supply at the same time.
I think the problem we have, and I don't know how you feel about this, is, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to be as far-sighted as we needed to be because of lack of funds, but this stuff, these projects do not get any cheaper every day that path passes, every month, every year, so had we done this 10 years ago...
Well, had the town tapped into it for free?
Yeah. There's that, yeah. All right, thank you.
Curiosity factor, how deep is it out there at 60?
440 feet roughly.
There you go. That's why he's gonna be the next DPW supervisor.
When he was a kid, he went down there with a ruler and measured it all the way out, right?
No, you've been in there in a boat.
No, no, no.
You haven't been down there?
No, no, no.
I thought you did one of those tours when they went, oh.
No, I think the one on Bernard is like 600.
It's almost 600, yeah, just over 600.
Wow.
It's more shallow, if you will.
I remember the guy that went down through there.
Oh, yes.
But that's all I got, there's no questions? I will, I will wait for the rest of this stuff. We good?
You will wait for the rest of this stuff?
Just to let you, through the chair, just to let you know, I have been pushing a little bit to DCR to think about another tunnel. If we haven't, we did have an earthquake here a little while ago, it was only 3.07, 3 miles down or whatever it was, but if we ever had an earthquake and something happened to the tunnel going down to Wachusett Street, Wachusett Reservoir, what are they gonna do for water in Boston?
He'll take ours.
Yes, they will. It's always, you know, that's why, it was talked a long time ago about putting another tunnel in just for a backup.
Oh, wow. Okay.
For them, it's time, just in case.
Are you done?
I am, thank you.
Gary, I will happily go out of order on new business if there are things on here that specifically...
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay. I see a DPW appropriation transfer.
Yes, you do.
You wanna do that?
Okay.
Let's do that.
You should have that.
Probably at the back.
Oh, it's under new business.
Yep, yep, I got it. All right, so we've moved. I will come back, Margaret, to your stuff, and under new business, DPW appropriation transfer, you have it, it is from 431-5400 Town Vehicle Fuel to 421-5130 Highway Wages. Present balance is in the negatives, and the amount requested is 3,500. And you have the detail.
Motion to approve.
Am I looking at the right one?
Yep.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions?
No.
And this was approved by the Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you have, you signed the agreement for sanitary sewer rehab?
All right, also in your new business, you have the, is this the contract?
That's a portion of this 200, whatever page comes.
So if you look at it, it's a KP Law cover, they reviewed it, approved for form, and this is, in case anyone was wondering, the Weston and Sampson Contract for Sanitary Sewer Rehab, Years One and Two, with a draft notice to proceed. Could I have a motion?
Motion to sign sanitary rehabilitation, one and two-year contract. Second.
Do you have any questions?
Just to clarify, this is the $375,000 contract for the next phase of work on the sanitary sewer rehab.
And what was the notice to proceed date, when are they starting?
I did not give them until you sign the agreement. Legal has signed it, I need the accountant's signature, told them, the contractor, that it will be signed tonight, and I will contact them in the morning.
Excellent.
This is the recommendation of the town.
Yes, and the vote should be contingent on certification of funds by the town accountant.
I'm good with it. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a motion and a second, is the motion amenable to the contingency of available funds?
Yep.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Gary.
Okay, you have, under old business, Sharnock Hill Road letter?
Yep, all right. Now, this was email to everyone, I don't know if you all had a chance to read it?
Yes.
Um, Gary, do you have anything to add to the letter?
No, we tidied it up today.
They did a good job.
Is this the revised one from legal?
Yes.
Yeah, and this was hand-delivered, right? It says...
This was not delivered until we get...
No, actually, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Ridge Road, I'm looking at the Ridge Road letter. Hold on. Okay.
Yeah, well, it wasn't delivered.
So this address is, Gary, you just want to give a little synopsis of what this, this one's all about, this letter, Sharnock Hill?
Sure, that gives the cost by town bid from Main Street to Bryce Lemon with a full-depth reclamation and two and two pave.
That's okay.
It's roughly 2,600 feet to 3,000. What I would like to do is, from that point of Bryce Lemon to where we repaired further north on Sharnock at the rail trail, I'd just like to tie that in, but obviously, that's not gonna be with their funds, that would be the town's responsibility.
Okay.
I did meet with a contractor, I did meet with a paver on the site last week, told them, they asked me what I wanted, and I told them, and you have the number in front of you, that's our price, the town's price, not theirs. I feel that's cheaper than what they could have it done for. I do not want a patchwork, it'll be depressed. It'll have to be saw cut for that 3,000 feet, and what their plan was to just patch what was damaged. Now, in some instances down there, there's 10-foot of clearance, so a school bus or a truck and a car can't pass without pulling into that ditch or where the barrels are. So what I want, and what everybody knows I want, is 2,600 feet of reclamation and pave.
Is this letter public?
Yes.
What you just said's not in the letter, are you going to be able to provide us with a list of all of your requirements that you're going to give the contractor? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's all, that's all there are, what I just gave you, but yes.
Okay. Still...
It's very simple, it's cheaper to actually reclaim than it is to mill. I don't want it milled because I know what's underneath, or what isn't underneath, I should say, so it won't last, I want it reclaimed.
Okay.
I want part of that asphaltic material put down for substructure base, for the base on top, and obviously, big concrete top coat on top of that.
Obviously. No, but you see, you say that's it, but that was actually a lot. There were measurements there, you want a specific width, you want it full, you know, the reclamation, and it come on top, so...
To what it was, 22 by 3,000, that's what I want.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments about the letter?
I do. Um, it's, I think it's good that it has a deadline set in here, so July 13th is the deadline for them to begin construction.
To reach out, actually, I think they have to reach out to me. I want to hear from them by that, that close of business on July 13th.
Okay, so they need to respond by the 13th to schedule repairs, but you're saying repairs need to be done immediately, and as a result, permits could be withheld or revoked if the road repairs are not timely commenced and are completed. Is that all permits issued under that company anywhere, or specific permits?
It's any permits the town issues that are qualified under Chapter 40, Section 57, which is failure to pay taxes and municipal charges, and so our legal has determined that these constitute, the amounts owed for the repair constitute municipal charges. So it could be.
So it could affect.
Permits, sewer permits, water permits.
So revocation can take place for, for a house being built on the other side of town, right? If it's.
It's any permits.
Any permit, any business with the town. And do we have a, a deadline for that? I'm like, what? Or else why?
We'd have a deadline for that.
Or else why?
Yeah, I don't think we have a deadline, uh, for that, Jeff, until we hear, obviously there's gonna be some back and forth. I don't expect a phone call or an email on the thirteenth saying, "Okay, let's do it." So, this is gonna be a battle. It's gonna be a battle, that's all, that's the way I see it.
But to Jeff's point, you don't wanna give a deadline for repairs complete.
Not until I know where, no, I can't. I can't until I, until I hear from them, um, by July thirteenth.
But you have made it clear that you want all the repairs done before the start of school.
I do, yeah.
But that's not in here.
No. No, because I, I want a response, I expect a response, I want a response.
Okay.
And then, uh, once I get that, we'll obviously have to bring it to you, the board, and obviously I would assume we'd have to go back to Legal. Uh, I just expect it to be a battle.
If you expect it to be a battle and today's June, July second, how would we possibly think it would be done in time for school?
Well, I guess that, that's up to Legal about the ramifications of what we can do.
The town would have to take further action, so there would be more time needed.
I like timelines, I'm like, what's the timeline? I'm, I'm absolutely willing to put my signature on a revocation of any and all building permits that are going on by the, the company in question. But we don't keep picking the can down the road with, with legal issues, oh, you know, and now we have to wait for lawyers, this and that, let's set a deadline. Yeah, July thirteenth, they need to have a sit-down with you and, uh, get this repair scheduled, it has to meet your satisfaction. Hopefully with the, the premise that it's all gonna be done by school. And if we're not seeing, in all ways I say that because it seems to be a pattern here of, of people complaining of things not being done. Let's, let's get it done and if not, then listen.
Well, the deadline, I mean.
It's gotta be revoked.
The drop-dead end date would be August thirty-first. Before school starts, a job to be completed.
And, and we lose.
And, and inspected.
Yeah.
And actually, it's not the thirty-first.
I don't know what, when school starts, I don't know what the weekend is before, I don't know what day Labor is, Labor Day is on this year, but.
Let them, let them fight their legal battles with, with the revoked permit then, you know, that's why, with the, with the set guideline, timeline and, uh, you can argue whatever you want, but spelled out.
Okay.
Just trying to get it all done because we, we lose poor Margaret here.
Poor Mar, not poor Margaret.
I'll stay in touch.
Okay.
So, can I offer a request, I suppose, and see if you're okay with it? Because we could all still sign the signature page. What, would you be comfortable with two additions, or actually one addition and one change? An addition of an August twenty-fourth deadline, because school starts on the twenty-eighth?
For completion.
Completion and inspection by you, by the twenty-fourth, not just, oh, here you go, we're done and here's. And then, a deadline instead of next Friday, I mean, today's Tuesday, excuse me, today's Monday, I know we have a holiday this week, but there's no reason to wait through all of next week for them to call you.
Oh, I only waited, actually, I only did it to get, got the holiday out of the way, that's all.
So let's do the ninth, yeah? End of the day on the ninth?
That's, that's fine, if that's what, if that's what you decide, that's fine.
Well, no, it's more up to you, if you weren't here on the ninth.
Gary's not here on the ninth.
I'm not here on the ninth.
Well, then that doesn't work, how about the tenth?
We can also, we can certainly change where they're gonna respond to.
No? No, why would we do that?
Because I won't be here on the ninth.
How about the tenth?
I won't be, I'm off next week.
That's why you quit, that was my question to you, okay.
Can you come in?
Okay, I'll do that.
What about the sixth, is that too soon?
The sixth is. Ooh, I don't know, is that too soon to get the letter out in time?
We already, we already signed. We already signed.
Too soon, why didn't you leave it like it is, leave it alone.
All right, because that's two weeks.
And part of the reasoning for July thirteenth, 'cause it's a Friday, and that happens to be a good day for me, so it's Friday the thirteenth, that's what I want.
All right, fine, fine. Then you're okay with adding the twenty-fourth as our drop-dead date, great.
Yes.
So, okay.
Is it okay to add that to a signature, we've already did a signature page?
So, so why don't you, you can just vote to approve it as amended, and I will actually change page one to include the eight-twenty-four drop-dead project completion date.
And keep the existing signature.
Yep.
Yes.
So we don't have to come back and sign it or delay it again until the next meeting.
Thank you.
And Margaret, it's. It's.
No, I'm, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Right here.
Oh, it is, all right.
I was just gonna say, the drop-dead date is completed and signed, signed off on both.
Okay.
I think, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna play games with this timeline thing, just get it done.
Okay, we'll just change that, so the thirteenth will stay and then we'll add that other language.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
A motion to make the amendments as recommended by Town Administrator.
Okay.
And.
And that tonight.
Keep the signature page, uh, as we sign to.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous?
Okay, and, and I'll, and I'll just figure, I guess, I'm not gonna assume, I'm gonna figure that under Margaret's update, you don't really need me for the Town Administrator, D P W Super and Town Planner Search Process Update.
Unless you're gonna put in for it.
No, Dick is. No, but there's no questions about it, so I think we're, and I think you're good with me.
Doing a good job, Gary.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Couldn't do it without all you guys and Dick Williams.
Both of you.
Thanks, Gary.
Bye, Gary.
Bye. Thank you. All right, back to the order, Margaret.
Procurement update, so I'm working on two decent-sized procurements. The first is the I F B for the roofing projects, uh, because I would like to get that, uh, posted in the central register before the end of July. Um, and the town could move forward on those projects. And the other is Marsh Field lease agreement, which has been in the works for quite some time and based on recent conversations, we'll probably need to include, um, references to the application of pesticides, herbicides, and references to, uh, the availability of the field for other groups. So, I'm working on, on those right now, so those are just.
Sorry, I, um, John Miller had reached out to me, President of the Rutland Youth Baseball, um, and was wondering if maybe it would be beneficial to have a sit-down meeting. I know there's been a lot of back and forth and conversation about the field use and, um, exclusivity to baseball and all of that. And he just wanted to make sure that he, that, that Rutland Youth Baseball's side, Rutland Youth Baseball, softball's side was heard and that it, the work that they've been doing to make amendable on their side are better understood among the wider public.
Based on very recent conversations, including the conversation the board had at your last meeting, I think it probably would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Can we invite him to the next meeting, put it on the agenda?
He actually wanted to come tonight, but he's coaching a game, so that, he had reached out to me and, um, just was, you know, saying that he and the board, their board is very happy to, you know, sit down and have a.
I'm, I'm wondering, um, I mean, maybe it would be a lot for one night, but it is, you know, the other way to go would be to have, to ensure that they're all here, baseball, softball, soccer, because obviously we have soccer asking for things as well. Get them all on the same page.
Yep.
Get us on the same page.
Yep.
What's our obligation? What is our obligation when a lease expires and it's up for re-lease? Does it, we should, should we put it out to these other groups that wanna have a.
The R F P is actually going to be not issued to one single group, it'll be issued to any group of proposers who intend to use the field for the purposes the board identifies.
So if we suddenly reissued an R F P saying Marsh Field was for.
The soccer.
Clown shows, yeah, I, then, then somebody would have to respond to an R F P for clown shows.
I'd be happy to see it on the agenda, uh, with an invitation to all the other groups or any other group that may have an interest in, uh, Marsh Field at the next meeting or the meeting after that.
And I don't, I mean, I personally don't necessarily know that it is only groups interested in Marsh Field, but just in, maybe in field space in general or something, I mean, because the way I see it is there's soccer, there's softball, which is a difference, completely different sport than baseball. I mean, they're two different rules, different, not, so I think that it's, those are the big three right now, but I know basketball has been, there's been a lot more outdoor basketball recently also, so I think it's sports in general and, um.
I think it's been actually two, almost two and a half years since the big Recreation Roundtable we had, so I think it's time. It's time, and there's, and there's certainly more demand for field space.
Yeah.
It's not the, the choice of a preferred sport, it's what to do with the town real estate, right? With the lease that is expired and up for renegotiation, that's what it's about.
And we heard from soccer that there is, you know, fo- football and field hockey and stuff is interested in space also, so I think it's.
So maybe bringing that in along with the entire list of town-owned properties to see what is available, what's suitable, uh, we, we do have a.
And how best is to manage all of it, I mean.
Okay, so, um, Sheila, do you wanna put that, you want that on July thirtieth or?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna wait too long. Let's try for July thirtieth and we reach out to all of the organized sports groups. I don't know, I don't have any contacts with field hockey or football. And I, maybe, maybe C C Karina on this and see what kind of requests she's getting, if any, through her office. Um, and let's, because, you know, to everybody's point, field space is at a premium, and every time we assign field space to something specific and it can only be used for that thing, we're limiting everyone else and we just, there's not enough to go around right now, so.
Uh, maybe you could start that night with your regular business meeting and then just.
Yeah.
Move on into the A Roundtable, big discussion.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the next thing on my updates is Town Administrator, D P W Superintendent and Town Planner Search Process Updates. So, in order of submission deadlines, Town Administrator, that submission deadline was June twenty-fifth and as of that date, the town received sixteen resumes, um, and I'll get back to that in a moment. The Town Planner, um, Community Development Coordinator, as of today, four resumes have been submitted. And then D P W Superintendent, just one so far, but that deadline is July thirty-first. And the way it's going, it seems as though people wait until near the very end of the, the submission period before they, they file, then there's usually a flurry. So as far as the Town Administrator, a search, I put together a couple of things for the board. I recommend, um, that a screening, a, a very, a small resume screening, uh, task force, working group, uh, be put together. The three individuals, uh, that I thought of to serve on this who have a, who have a wide range of, um, knowledge around finance, capital, planning, et cetera, are, um, Town Accountant Dan Haynes, C I P C member and former Select Board and Finance Committee member, Joe Becker, and Janet Pierce, the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency Executive Director. And between the three of them, I think they would do an excellent job going through the resumes and screening them specifically for minimum qualifications or equivalents and preferred qualifications and just seeing if there are any viable candidates in the bunch. Meanwhile, though, um, I have also reached out to someone who's an experienced and now retired, uh, Town Administrator, um, for potential interim Town Administrator work here. Uh, the person is willing, uh, to come in and willing to talk to the board about a, an interim contract. Um, I would actually recommend that the board proceed with discussions with this person, so you're not rushing into a future permanent administrator. So there are a couple of things that are in, in, uh, process now, but, um, I think even though we do have sixteen resumes and some potentially qualified individuals, um, I, I think the town just needs to take its time and make sure all the, the candidates are fully vetted and you get the, the person that's right for Rutland. So, uh, my recommendation, um, and the board can certainly discuss this, my recommendation would be to proceed with, um, uh, calling in, uh, this person who would serve as interim and having a talk with the person in executive session about a contract. And then, um, allowing the, um, the screening task force, if you agree to this composition for the screening task force, allow them to meet sometime next week and, uh, and get through the resume screening to see if there are any viable candidates that could be brought forward to the board.
Who do they respond back to, the, the task force?
They could respond back to me and I would give the information directly to the board, yeah. I'm gonna try to, um, I'm gonna try to stay out of the process as much as, as possible, so, so there's no bias.
Need a motion on this?
I, I think we need a, I think we need a timeline here, so, Margaret, you, all three of those people, it, did anybody have any questions about the three that she just?
So can you just re, scroll over those three again, please?
Yes, okay, the first is Town Accountant Dan Haynes, who's not an employee of the town, he is actually a contractor for the town. And someone who is, who, whose background is auditing municipal finances and he's someone who would be very well-versed in municipal finance. Um, the next person is Joe Becker, who's a current member of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and he's also a former Select Board Member and Finance Committee Member. He's got a wealth of knowledge about the history of the town, finances, capital, so, um, he's, he's, uh, he'd be a great asset. And then finally Janet Pierce, who's the Executive Director of the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency and also happens to be a part-time treasurer collector for the town that, that she lives in and she's held that position for a long time. But her knowledge about, um, regional planning and planning issues that affect this town in particular would be invaluable, so.
Okay.
Is that enough, people?
I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a good group, unless the board, um, feels otherwise, I think it's, I think, for the purpose of screening resumes, I think it's a good group.
Okay, so, we are meeting on Monday. I have no sense that they would be able to get us anything on Monday, but if they were contacted in the morning and we let them know that we'll be releasing the resumes to them to review, um, in whichever manner you wanted to do that. And if they had preliminary information for us on the ninth, maybe we can do a placeholder in that agenda. Cause it might not be something official, but then why don't we consider possible interviews if they had viable candidates on the night of the twenty-third of July? Which is an off-night for us, but we all had issues with the sixteenth.
And I won't be here, but that'll be okay.
And that'll be okay, yeah.
Okay, July twenty-third, assuming there will be a couple of candidates who could be brought forward to the interview process.
And this is for the full-time.
Full-time.
Position.
Yes.
We haven't, we're not talking about the interim yet, correct?
Well, no, that's my next.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I mean, like.
So then, do we have, we have a lot to cover on the ninth, but I'm just wondering if we could even fit in a brief phone conversation with the interim that night? Maybe he doesn't need to come out?
That would have to be an executive session if you're talking about contract negotiations, I could, I could ask him.
Yeah, let's try that, even just to begin. Why do it over the phone, well.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'd ask.
Much prefer to see someone in person.
I would too, but we have to start the, I'm not saying we shouldn't see him before we hire him, but we need to get this ball rolling and we have a sort of which comes first, the chicken or the egg situation? We can't wait to talk to him until the twenty-third and we're interviewing final, you know, some candidates. After that, we're probably, even if we liked somebody, we would have to do most likely a second interview with them. So you're already looking at well into the month of August and I, I just, we need the, it's clear we need the interim.
I, I think that you'd need the, the interim.
Right, so, if he can come in the ninth, great.
Okay.
If he can't, I suppose the twenty-third. Or if he sets another date, we'll, we need to work around him, I think.
What time is your, uh, work session on the ninth?
I think, we said we'd start early.
No, I think.
We were starting early, yeah, five. It, it was you, we were ranking at five.
Five o'clock, you said five o'clock.
I think I said I could do whatever, no skip said he preferred five or five-thirty, I think.
You said five-thirty, didn't you?
I thought five-thirty.
If we could get him in here at five o'clock and just have a brief conversation with him, so I'll see if he can come in at five.
Yep.
I have five o'clock in my calendar.
Okay.
Yep, I do.
So, where would the money come from to pay for an interim?
So the money would actually be, I, I sent you a, a little spreadsheet. Uh, after annual town meeting, we were awarded a grant, um, that we didn't know whether or not we were going to get and that's the grant for the, um, um, the streamline permitting system, software, startup costs. And that is actually going to save eleven thousand dollars off of the appropriation that town meeting voted in that line. So, a, an appropriation transfer, uh, could be made, but would have to be made through town meeting because it's the beginning of the year. So you'd have to go to town meeting for an appropriation transfer. Um, initially, well, yeah, initially, the interim could be paid from my wage line.
Yep.
But event, you're gonna have to somehow replenish that later.
Right.
Okay, so we, we have funds somewhere to cover it, so it's not a burden.
You have up to twelve thousand dollars, um, in, uh, available, uh, budget funding to be able to use toward, uh, this process, the interim and, um, maybe some overlap between the interim and the permanent Town Administrator.
Thank you.
All right, so I've got dates.
Yes, and I think, um, if anybody has any comments about this, I think as far as a start date for the interim, Margaret has committed to coming out one evening a week.
Two, two evenings a week.
Two evenings a week in August. And the ideal situation would be that we would have an overlap, um, with the interim coming in when she's here. If you're okay with that. And I, obviously, we're still gonna have more financial issues with that, but. But it's not a full-time salary, so actually in the month of August, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, and that's included on that spreadsheet I gave you, so that would be factored into that cost.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so I've got the dates here, I'm gonna see what I can do about the screening committee getting any kind of preliminary info on the ninth. I can't guarantee it, but I'll reach out to them.
No, of course not, and then I think my last question is, as far as the deadline for applications goes, and now we have them, can, is there a way to continue posting, um, this on, is it worth posting it, contin- uh, continuing it on the M M A site, that it will be open until filled?
Open till filled.
You could.
Same with Gary's, um.
Open till filled.
Were we putting that on Indeed or what, what type of sites?
We actually had that on M M A, um, I don't think we put it on Indeed, we can put it on Indeed, though.
Seems to be the new wave.
Yeah, it does, it's very general, we get, uh, applications from everywhere, but that's okay, cause sometimes you've, you get a few, you get a few good ones. you've, you get a few, you get a few good ones. So we can put it on Indeed. Mass Highway Association would be another one that we have not posted to yet, but we can look at posting on that as well.
For both, both vacancies.
And possi, well, the, Mass Highway Association, I think, would be a good one. Okay.
Who, who's gonna do that?
We can do it.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we need a motion or anything for any of this?
No, these are all just scheduling issues. Um, all right, Town Planner?
Town Planner, we have four resumes so far. That deadline is the third, tomorrow is the deadline. And again, we typically get a flurry right at the end of, end of the submission period, so I wouldn't be surprised if we get a couple more.
We add Town Planner to the Indeed, open till filled?
We could.
Four's low.
Could. That has also been posted on the American Planners Association website, so we may be getting some resumes from out of, out of state as well, just to see what kinda candidates we get. I know CMRPC used their, their venues to, to post it as well, so.
Is there a steering committee for that, or resume screening committee, or is that you?
We have not, that, that has not been set up yet, the, the screening committee. And I know, well, Planning, Planning Board will obviously be involved in that and we can talk about whether or not we wanna broaden that a little to, to capture the community development component of the position too. So we can talk about that, so. And the final thing I have on my list is the Managed Growth Steering Committee. I know the board is gonna be talking about this on the ninth, setting up a, a steering committee to move forward with that process. Dick Williams from Planning Board and Sean Moore from Conservation Commission have offered to participate in the, in the task force and we're looking for broader represent, well, Ron Barron from CMRPC would like broader representation, so he'd be looking for a board member and then a member of the Board of Health and one citizen at large who might be interested in serving, in serving on a Managed Growth Steering Committee. It's an exciting, it's kind of an exciting project. So he's gonna wanna do a kickoff meeting, I think sometime the middle of this month, middle to, to end of this month, so.
Okay, so Dick, your role on this would be as what? What's your title? You're coming from Planning?
Planning.
And Sean is coming from?
Planning and CONCOM.
So his, his interest on the steering committee would be to represent CONCOM?
Okay, so can we get, did you talk about this within your committees and decided it and voted that you would be the?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just wanna make sure we have that in writing, because they'll all have to do that. Board of Health, okay. Did CONCOM do it, do you think?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, let's try, let's make sure CONCOM.
So who's gonna represent the board? Us, meaning the board. Any interest?
Anyone who's interested, yeah.
No, shaking your head, no?
It's exciting stuff.
It is exciting stuff.
I mean, I guess for me, it's what the time commitment is right now, you know?
There'll be, yeah, there'll be, there'll be some meetings on this as it, as it moves forward.
I'm in, all right.
You're in?
Nominate myself. I'll nominate you, Jeff. I nominate Jeff to be on this, um, show me the line and I'll be in it, all right. Managing Growth Steering Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
I have asked Ron for a charge for the steering committee, just to give everyone an idea of what you're gonna be, what you're gonna be doing.
All right.
Good, that's it.
Okay, heifer playground. I think we still don't have enough to move on. We do have information that the structure itself can be accepted, however, we will have to do two things. We would have to add an ADA compliant piece of equipment, because that structure does not have anything on it that is. And we would have to have a long discussion, or at least a discussion, about surfacing, because grass just doesn't cut it these days. So, and who would pay for that? As it stands right now, we are still waiting for the official heifer would like to give this to the town of Rutland letter. And they've raised, I think, only about $700, which, you know, gets them on the way to a piece of equipment. I know Gary gets catalogs that tend to have seasonal end sales, so if we were in the position to do that, it would be lovely to see this rolling before the fall starts.
Where's it gonna go?
At Glenwood, at the community center, sort of behind the tree line of where the youngest kids play the different sports. There's a couple of sports going there.
It would be on that side.
You got some major work to do over there.
I know, well, it's, it's a hill.
So I wonder why, I just don't know why we have to put it right there. I really don't. You got stones, you got trees, you got all kinds of stuff to remove.
Well, we ripped a playground out and didn't replace it.
We ripped the playground out because it was unsafe.
Because it was too old.
It was unsafe.
It was too old.
Not too old, it was unsafe.
Because it was too old.
I'm not gonna fight the battle.
Well.
But it was, it was unsafe.
The point is, we, we had a supplemental playground on that location, we tore it out when it was no longer safe, agreed. We did not replace it with anything. That is the community center, it gets a lot of use.
So what's it gonna cost to, to relocate from Heifer Project to?
They supposedly have volunteers that are going to move it. The moving was not the issue. Really, the locationing, the location surfacing is absolutely the issue, because even the grading, which is probably the easiest part of that, the rocks and the trees, you've got the actual surface to buy, because it's not just normal mulch, it's not just, you know?
So it's going on the same side as the fields now, behind the tree line?
Behind the border parties and everything up and back.
Yeah, where the sheds.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At one point, there was discussion of whether or not the sheds could be relocated, but there's all, there's been all kinds of discussions there about extending parking, because right now, people are sort of driving down that hill a little bit. Dick shaking his head, what is it, Dick?
Nothing, no, 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 yeah, keep on truckin'.
How far back do we own? It's quite a ways.
Yes.
It's a big piece of property.
Papers to the top of the hill.
Yeah, it's got that triangle that you can see on the maps.
Oh yeah, that was the field I was gonna mow once.
I, I thought you were talking about putting a cemetery there.
Yeah, we talked cemetery there too.
That too?
Engine.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was my other question, is, is it the field space that's currently mowed by, because there was the soccer field space that's currently mowed, but this is not the same field space that, I mean.
Behind those sheds.
It is, behind.
Okay, behind the sheds, that's.
Yeah.
It's mow work for the, for the people to maintain and everything else, once it's put in.
Right.
Because it's not already there. I guess we should probably look at this equipment. Has anyone looked at it?
Yeah.
Nice?
It's lovely. It's a very high-end, however, it is a high-end.
Residential.
Residential set.
And just mow around it to clean it up around that area too.
What do you think, Dick? You like it?
Yes.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
But it's not handicapped accessible.
Right.
So that's first thing right off, people are gonna yell and scream, it's not.
Well.
And so we're gonna dump money into it to make it handicapped accessible.
Well, I know, I think that's what they were raising money for, to try to, you know, be able to buy that extra piece of equipment, which I don't think is on its own that expensive. But again, it gets back, I really do, I, you know, I agree that it's the site prep. And part of that is because we all agreed that it wouldn't go back behind the actual building. It would go on the field side.
Yeah. I like playgrounds, it's been a few years since I've been a playground daddy, but, I mean, that's a destination, the parking is there, people can par, I mean, when you have little kids, you know.
Yeah.
You hit the playground, it's a nice place.
Aren't they talking about having volunteers, like donated manpower to do the clearing and everything? So that might not be, I mean, I, I, I don't know, though, I mean.
I, I think that most likely, again, it's, yes, it needs groundwork, it needs excavation, probably it needs some leveling. I honest to God think the issue is gonna be where to find the money and the labor to prep the, the surface.
Talk to the sheriff. That's perfect.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, it's true.
Perfect.
That's a good sheriff's.
That'd be very different for them too, they haven't done a lot of that.
I think it'd be creative, you can, I mean.
There also has to be some thought given to ongoing maintenance costs too, so once the playground's in, it's gonna be something new for the town to maintain, so.
So we are still, unfortunately, in a little bit of a holding pattern on that, but, you know, I, I don't know that you're really, what, what can they do if they wanna go up and see it, Dick? Is Sean still?
No.
No.
He's not there anymore.
Okay.
The gate's always open, just drive in.
No, it doesn't.
Close today.
Yes, but he, he, the, the, Mark is there today, but he may not be in a couple of days, you know.
Okay, so we don't know, is the answer to that?
That is correct.
Okay.
You, you don't have access to it, do you, Dick? Or do you, if we?
Oh, I have access to it, yes.
Do you have a, okay, I feel like I don't wanna push this too much. Do you have allowed access where you could bring someone in legally to see the property?
I could ask Mark, but.
Okay.
Yeah, at the moment, I, just I.
Okay.
Okay.
No, I.
There might be pictures, I, I thought, I saw.
I think there are some pictures.
Yeah.
Add that to your list, Dick. Now you have two people to talk to, ask, ask favors, okay? All right.
Should we reach out to the sheriff's office anyways? In the meantime, define what it would be amenable to?
We could do that.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
What is it that you're gonna do? Take the stone, bury the stone wall that's there? Remove the trees?
No, I.
To make it bigger, or?
Personally, I would've left the tree line and the stones and put it behind it. That was just me.
On the opposite side, out in the field park.
Mm-hmm. Which still needs to be leveled, but I would never have removed that tree line, it's the only shade they have there.
Isn't it, uh, an overall expensive too much? Why don't you ask if anybody in the town, that, there are several people that are excavating and companies and?
Yep.
Would it be worthwhile asking them if they wanna donate some time to, to do something like that?
Yep, it still gets us back to the surfacing, the cost of that surfacing. I just.
Is it special mulch?
Yes, yes. And even the plate, well, and of course, we let Gary leave, there you go.
It's like a rubberized mulch, it's for ADA compliance, but it's firm enough for mobility impaired people to move around on it, so.
And, and there's regulations about how far out it has to go from the edge of the end of the equipment. So you basically have to have this perimeter where it doesn't just end anymore.
Is it like true-up tires or something like that?
Yeah.
Similar.
Yeah.
Well, I think you need to be able to roll, roll a wheelchair and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so that's why the mulch is.
Yeah.
All that is obsolete.
There's other levels of it. There are other playgrounds that use other materials, including a big mat that has padding underneath, that's sort of the highest end of things. I've heard that there is some sort of sand that's allowed possibly, but I, I, I don't know.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so there we are. Yeah? Here we go. So we have a very long list of board and committee reappointments. I am actually going to read this list for the record. Town Administrator Margaret Nardowitz, Fire Chief Seth Knight, Constable Mark Mozio, Richard Salz, Ralph Anderson, Town Council KP Law, Accountant Scanlon and Associates LLC, Zoning Board of Appeals Christopher Senical, Associate Board of Appeals Paul Corain, Stealer of Weights and Measures Edward Seidler, Veterans Graves Officer Philip Cannell, ADA Coordinator Ted Purcell, Records Access Officers Anita Carlson as Supervisor, Damian Bartek, Seth Knight, Michael Moriarty, Nicholas Monaco, Jacqueline O'Brien, Chief Procurement Officer Margaret Nardowitz, Veteran Service Agent Robert Ortiz, Conservation Commission Eric Bigelow, Cable Advisory Committee Paul Mattson, James Kelly, Christian Santillo, Peter Crane, Memorial Day Committee John Byron, William Bailey, Philip Cannell, William Critchley, Development and Industrial Commission Michelle Van Reet, Insurance Advisory Committee Michael Gleason, Donald Hapikowski, Rebecca Tuttle, Neil Viner, Carrie Remington, Phyllis Chardier, Jason Citronell, Healthcare Benefits Consultant The Boyle Group, Central Mass Regional Planning Committee Charles Williams, Stormwater Advisory Committee Gary Kelleher, Solar Committee Diane Peterson, Norm Anderson, Gary Kelleher, Robert Donaldson, Charles Williams, Margaret Nardowitz, Capital Improvement Daniel Gracy, Agriculture Commission Glenn Coppola, Richard Williams, Gerald Kristoff, Jesse Clayman, Cultural Counsel Donna Ferguson, Michelle Armstrong, Fourth of July Committee Barbara Campbell, John Kublick, John Fitzgerald, Cynthia Purcell, Deb, Deborah Barakian, Zachary Palmer, Carrie Moda, Tina Greenfield, Missy Polyafico, Frank Jancora, Ethics Commission Liaison Anita Carlson, Municipal Hearing Officer Anita Carlson, and Earthworks Board Glenn Coppola.
You forgot one on Conservation.
I have omitted two, actually, three. I omitted myself, that's that rep to watch Use it Earth Day, someone else can make that separately. I, I also omitted on the Cable Advisory Committee Addison Redfield, I believe he's no longer a resident of the town of Rutland, is that correct?
My understanding is he's not a resident, but he can serve as an advisor.
Which doesn't require an appointment, though.
Doesn't.
That wouldn't require the appointment.
And the last one I left off was under.
CONCOM.
Conservation Commission. Joseph Delacqua.
Well, why did we leave him off?
I would personally like to see a change in direction for that, for that commission.
Well, he came.
I think it's time.
He came recommended highly by the whole, the whole group when the letter they sent in. Maybe, maybe they need to have the board sit down, talk with them and say, listen, this is a direction we'd like to move in, instead of throwing somebody out that's, does a good job, who knows his job. Can we, is that something that, so, I mean, you got a big list of, of reappointments here, and a lot of these names are new to at least 40% of the board, here speaking, myself in there. If there is any concerns, instead of having, putting us in a position where we're just, okay, I guess, we'll approve everybody, can we step it back for further conversation on why those concerns are there? And so we're well-informed on what we're doing?
Yeah, we can absolutely have a discussion about anyone on this list. I read it for the record, omitting the ones that either were an issue because they were personal for my, you know, my own appointment, or because of the issue with Addison, which I think doesn't need to be on there, and I did leave out that one. If anyone else has questions or concerns, this is absolutely the time to do it.
So, so, well, can we start with the easy one?
Yep.
Yourself, are you still interested in being representative for Earth Day?
Yes, but I don't need to do it, I have two new members here, I've been on it for a very long time, and so I wanted to offer that up to somebody else on the board first.
Geez, I wouldn't want to deprive you of that experience, so I would be happy to.
Okay.
Unless somebody else had an issue of it, I'd never heard of it before now, so I guess.
All right, it's the Recycling Center on the way to 190.
Oh!
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's close. Do we need a motion to put you on that?
Well, as it stands right now, there's no motion on the table. I read the list as presented. If you have, if you would like to make a motion to approve it as I presented with the addition of my name, you can certainly do that and we could move on, and we could second it for discussion, or we could make changes to the list as it was.
I have a question. Was it our last meeting, there was someone from CONCOM?
Yes, yes, and she was appointed. Yes, and she was appointed.
And we appointed her, I thought, just interim for a couple of weeks until.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
To finish out the term of that individual, which is a year and a half, two years.
Okay. That was my question.
Yep, and that's why she's not on.
Okay.
I thought we were just approving her until the July appointments and then.
You gotta fill the term out.
She gets on the rotation with anybody else.
Available, not filled.
That's what I wanted, Jeff, but everybody wanted to.
That's fine.
Since she was there that night, I think there was a feeling that they wanted to make that official for her.
Okay, so she's official. Absent anybody else who wants to be on the Watch Who Said Earth Day, and Sheila is still interested in doing it, love to see you back on that list.
Thanks.
All right, no problem?
No, no, no problem.
All right. Any want a motion on that?
I would take a motion as presented.
Motion to maintain Sheila Dib is our representative to the Watch Who Said Earth Day for the one-year term appointment.
Is that all you're taking action on right now? Okay.
Yeah, we're doing the easy stuff first, right?
So there's a second. All, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention?
Aye. And Addison, happy to have him as an advisory. It's just that he doesn't require an appointment, so he's still on the rolls, no problem. And we're gonna have a conversation about the Concom. There's two names on the conservation commission, Mr. Bigelow, Mr. Delacqua. They both expire in 2021. And Mr. Delacqua is the chair?
Yeah.
The chair of it?
Chair for, skip eight years. Is that right?
Six, I know.
Six.
Let me, are we having a conversation about it? Yes?
Just point of order. Should we have a motion in a second and discuss? Or can we, I think we can discuss, I think we can discuss the list. We can discuss the list. Yes.
Ladies first.
No, no, that was gonna be my question was the order that we needed to go in.
Right, no, go ahead. We can have this discussed. There's no motion right now.
So I have a question in the discussion here. Of the names here, are there anybody here, any of the names here have been identified as a potential conflict of interest with, well, are there any financial conflicts of interest with the town, first of all?
To my knowledge, not under the conflict of interest law.
Okay.
I probably have one. I will state for the record that I am in a butter, but for the earthworks board Glenn Coppola, that he owns a very large commercial property in town. He is not a resident of the town. He's a resident of Holden.
Glenn is resident, he's a resident of Rutland.
Is he now? Is he now? Not Neil?
Not Neil, is it?
Okay. All right, so he's a resident. Okay, so he's a resident, and he and his brother combined own a commercial property. They have had issues in the past where they were cited by DEP and fined for violations under earthworks.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. How many people are on this earthworks board? That's for the removal of land, is that what we're talking about?
Moving of earth.
Movement of earth, right? And yet he was cited recently?
No. It was, he was cited for doing an industrial processing and removal of topsoil.
What's he do, what's his?
From where?
From his property here in Rutland.
What's his occupation? Do we know?
Construction.
He's a construction guy?
Mm-hmm.
Construction company?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anybody else on this list here? Let's just start piecemeal here. Is there anybody else on the list here that is, their primary financial means is through construction? Something that would require a permit without town? Are there any names on here?
So Chris.
Not that it's bad, not that it's bad. I just wanna, I wanna start there.
Construction or contracting?
Chris Senical is in construction.
What?
That is your first page. Or ZBA.
Zoning board? Okay, does that deal with permits?
It deals with appeals. If someone wants to appeal the decision of the building commissioner, they might go to the zoning board of appeals. And in certain cases, the zoning board of appeals will issue certain permits as well, so.
Okay. Who else?
So Daniel Gracie on capital improvement, I actually don't know well. He's our newest member.
Capital improvement.
That's RDIC.
Is a construction individual, construction company?
No. I don't think.
He's an attorney.
He's an attorney. That's right. I think that's it.
Okay.
That's all I see. Keep in mind, these aren't your full lists. These are just the ones up for reappointment.
Okay. So two individuals that may have permit business, three individuals may have permit business with the town. Mr. Coppola is actually in the business of zoning that is in there. Is that a concern? Is that name up for concern or?
Which one are you looking at?
Earthworks board Glenn Coppola.
I do have a concern there, and I.
You have a concern there?
Considered omitting it, but I didn't. But now we're talking about it.
Mr. Delacqua, what does he do for work?
Well, he's retired now.
Is he not, is he in a permit business, seeking permits, something like that? So it's the direct, because he's the chair, direction of that particular commission is what?
I think for me, it's its direction, and it was interesting to hear from the woman who came before us two weeks ago to hear about the things that she thought we might have already done but hadn't yet. So I think to get us moving forward in the right direction, kind of a new day, we probably need to see if we can find people with a professional background like she has. Which, you know, and here's where you get into a gray area, and, you know, Dick in particular, we all know sometimes we are begging and pleading for some of these positions. And people put an enormous amount of time and effort when they do it, and it's for no money, for the most part.
And they're on the commission that's in their wheelhouse. That's why they're doing this, because this is their swim lane. However, if we have, I mean, a conflict of interest is a valid conversation. And, and I, you know, I have an interest in exploring that further, the conflict of interest. If we are going to talk about anybody that may have that, is it something that we could invite back for an executive session to say, hey, before, just understand that forty percent is brand new, never met you, okay? Before I put my, especially as a clerk, I'm putting my signature on the oath card. Can we ask a couple of questions before we reappoint you for three years?
Boy, can do that, but unfortunately it cannot, it doesn't qualify as an executive session matter, so it would have to be done in open session, so maybe some sort of structured interview might be appropriate in open session.
For the reason that, listen, we wanna, we wanna understand this, but that, we just wanna be reassured that this is, this is the, and I agree, I mean, if we need to take things in a different, different direction for that, this is probably the start of it. So I would not want to discount any of the people who are currently serving, and try to do this in the kindest possible way, but I would like to invite them. We could, we could maybe table their appointment until we get more information before I vote.
Okay.
And I'm talking about the earthworks board gentleman.
That gentleman's, he's also listed on agricultural commission.
I was just gonna say that. He's on.
So Mr. Senical, Mr. Delacqua, and Mr. Coppola, we would like to step that back with an invitation so that, I don't wanna speak for you, Leo, but the new novice member of the board can ask straight questions and make sure that we are confident and comfortable with what we're signing.
Sounds fair.
So you're gonna, Coppola for the agricultural commission also?
Because he's in the permitting business. If somebody is sitting on one side of the table, making a decision, and then on the other side of the table with an application or a check.
That's a, that's a direct conflict of interest, and there could be a discussion about recusal disclosures and reappointments.
That's what I was getting at. He's on two.
He's on two commissions. Okay. I just, just to, hey, listen, question and answer, can you tell us the extent of any business that you would have with the town so that we feel more comfortable? Well, the same if somebody was in the liquor business, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna end the conversation yet. Do we have anybody on this who's in the liquor license business? Or anybody who has a license before the board, restaurant license, something that requires the board's voucher for?
I can't think of anything like that. I'm trying to think, just to give you some background. You must know Mark Mozio?
Yes.
Okay, so business owner in town, but how that would affect the constable?
I would think if you. It doesn't.
So there's, you know, and you know Ralph Anderson and his former position. We talked about Chris. Phil Cannell is a former employee. Ted Purcell is also on library, and he works for the school district. We know Robert Ortiz. He's our new person, not from town. Obviously, we know Paul well at this point, our cameraman.
Anybody, anybody on this list with a seated past?
What?
Anybody here with, do we have anybody who used to be on America's Most Wanted or a registered sex offender?
Start Googling people.
Serious crimes and misdemeanors and felonies. Anything here that raises an eyebrow? Because we're vouching for these people, right?
Margaret, I do have.
My name means something.
I do have a question, and I, it's fine, but Dawn on the insurance advisory committee, who was not ever a, I mean, we have dispatch and patrol represented. He's, so he's only representing the general retirees.
He's only representing the retirees, and that has to be a retired town employee.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Williams, have a question?
I was just gonna say, the ag commission asked for somebody to go on to their, and it was Glenn that volunteered to do that.
And that gets, right, and that gets back to, it's not like we all the time have people banging down our doors for some of these positions.
So three names. Just step back for a second call, that's all.
Okay.
Right, you know?
So then what you can do is make a motion to appoint as presented minus those three names with the understanding that we will be inviting them in for further discussion.
And one of the names is on two boards here, so.
And that would be your call. If you don't have an issue with AgCom, but you have questions about earthworks, then.
No, I just, it's business with the town. So I would, I would, any more discussion there before I make a motion?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the reappointments as presented, and ask that we step back three individuals for the board's edification to ask questions and to, concerning any potential conflict of interest before we approve those reappointments. The individuals, Christopher Senical, zoning board of appeals, Joseph Delacqua, conservation commission, Glenn Coppola, earthworks board, and Glenn Coppola agricultural commission. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion?
When do you want them to come back?
So I was just looking, Margaret, I think it's going to have to be.
Step it back a month?
The ninth is getting.
The ninth, we can't do it on the ninth.
Thirty, yeah. So seven thirty, okay.
In a nice way, too. You know, hey, listen, one more question, but I'm green.
So, so does this mean they're off the board?
Right, they have not been reappointed at this moment.
And they're not on the board.
Correct.
They're not, no longer on any board.
But when do they expire here?
Right, they've expired.
All these guys have expired?
They've expired.
Well, can we do a one-month appointment until we can sit down again? Or is it all nothing?
I think, I mean.
That's what I would do, but I mean, I have no, I have no problem, I mean, with whatever you guys want to do, but.
So I think the.
It's going this way quick.
So looking at, I guess, Concom in particular, so we have one, two, three, four, five members. They would still be able to hold a meeting. They also still have another open seat to fill, even after appointing Melissa Danza two weeks ago. They had a meeting scheduled or would have for tomorrow night. They meet twice a month. That meeting, obviously, because of holidays, is canceled. So their next meeting, in order to have a quorum, would require them to have four of their existing five members, if we did it that way.
How about a six-month, a six-month reappointment for those three?
It's, you know, these appointments come up either by the year or by the three-year term, and it's not going to be, to wait a little while and let you do a little research, let them prepare statements if they want to prepare something, yeah. It's not, yeah. RDIC is five-year.
The chair, why is Glenn taken off the ag commission?
I don't want to take anyone off any commission. I just wanted to ask questions before I sign my name to the card.
I can see the earth, you're asking about the earth, but the ag commission, I mean, he's a very valuable person on that, on that commission and.
Which I don't know anything about, so that's why I'd be happy to withdraw it from that commission.
If I had a problem with somebody or I have a question with somebody, I wouldn't, I would go to them and talk to them, like Joe Delacqua or Senical, whoever, and satisfy my own mind. I mean, this, bringing this all up here, I just, I just don't get it.
But Skip.
I do get some of it, and it's not you, and it's not, it's not the young lady. We, we have other problems with Delacqua and some of the other people, and it's not really town. It's personal. All right?
I don't know of any of that.
So that's, I'm just gonna leave it going right like that.
I'm gonna call point of order here. That was a, quite an allegation.
That's very true.
What I stated was correct. I would like to see a change in the way conservation commission is headed.
And we could, you could call, you could appoint them, you could call them and say, this is the way the board wants you to direct, the direction to go.
And, excuse me, and to the point of when to talk about it, that's exactly what we're not supposed to be doing, going privately to people outside of public session, outside of the cameras, when nobody knows what's going on.
You, okay, never mind. I'll let it go.
Jeff asked the question, can we meet with them in executive session, and the answer is no. We have to have these conversations in an open session.
That is also my understanding, from the little I know, but from reading the MMA, that everything needs to be done as a.
You can go talk to Dick Williams or anybody in this room as a, as a individual. You have a problem with somebody, you go talk to them.
And for the record, I don't have a problem with any of them.
No, I mean.
I'm just asking about conflicts of interest and just want to ask questions before I, I mean, the yes vote is almost perched for my lips. I just wanna ask, satisfy my mind.
Yep, that's good.
In preparation for a future meeting with the board, for these three individuals, I'm happy to forward them disclosures and information on conflict of interest, just to give them some information, and they can read it themselves to prepare and say, you know, well, I don't have a conflict under the law, and they can decide for themselves whether or not they need to file disclosures, saying that there could be any perception of conflicts, so.
There you go, pending, pending the review of disclosure information.
I have a question for earthworks. I'm just looking now, and earthworks board is a representation of a few different of the boards and committees already, per what I've seen here. So Glenn would be representing the AgCom, which he's also part of. Does AgCom decide who they want to send to earthworks to represent them, or?
We asked, and he volunteered.
Oh, I wasn't sure how that worked. That's, that was my other question was, yeah.
All right.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there anything else?
Can we read back the motion here now? We've got quite a bit of conversation after that. Do you have it, Abby?
Yes, I wrote that you moved to appoint the slate except Mr. Senical, Mr. Delacqua, and Mr. Coppola from the earthworks board and ag commission with a step back and the invitation for the three of them for board edification to avoid any conflict of interest and for approval of appointments, and wait a second.
And we said July thirtieth meeting? Okay.
Does that sound friendly enough, or is that gonna be?
I think it's okay. It's.
I mean, I don't mean it to sound like that. Just say you have a couple of questions before we.
Yeah.
And are we going to leave the same gentleman who's on those both committees for the same conversation? Might as well, right?
He's coming in, so I think you can have the conversation.
In any ways, I just don't wanna, I mean, boy, I don't want anyone to feel.
No, Jeff, I get it. It's, this is a tough call and a tough jump for us. There are plenty of communities that beg and plead and fight for certain committees and commissions, and then others are competitive. There are others that take applications and have their choice of people, and they look for a particular background, and they look for people who have those strengths that they think they need and want in order to, you know, keep the town moving and following reg and all that, and we are maybe having those growing pains of, we've had to beg and plead for a long time.
Is it time?
Is there a way that we can find information? You have an individual on the roster before us that, just first I'm hearing of it, was cited by DEP for something that's related to the commission. So do we get information on that? Is there historical info to help us?
DEP records would contain that information, so I'm sure DEP website, if there is a record, it would be on the DEP.
Instead of doing a roundabout investigation, which is not our intention here, another reason to call them forward, hey, tell us about, what's this about, you know? Assume I know nothing about you, and I don't, because we've never met. Tell me a little bit about this here, and then let us make it informed.
DEP has comprehensive records, so if there is a record, they'd have it.
I'd rather just ask him in person for requesting records, so. Okay, fine.
And I think this, I mean, I, I'm, agree, having those conversations is important for me also, not knowing, and as the town's growing and we can't, the board can no longer be oversight, kind of fingers in everything oversight, and so we need to feel confident, or I feel like I need to feel confident with the people that we're appointing in the roles that we're appointing them to, because they're gonna be the eyes and ears and the doers for their charge, and I can't do it all. So for me, it's important to.
Excuse me. Would you not go to their committee?
Excuse me, would you not go to their committees, their, their meetings, rather than bringing them here, to go see how they work out?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
I'm just thinking, you know, you're saying that you're so stressed out here, or how many meetings you've got, maybe to go to their meetings might be a little bit better than.
I have done that, too.
Oh, I don't know, it's up, you know.
Have you been doing that, too?
Yeah, I mean, Dick, I think you've been in the room, we haven't done this much, in terms of really taking a harder look at, at, you know, the makeup of some of these committees, we've done it a few times, whether it was for better or for worse, it's hard to say, and I don't, you know, before, before Skip and I, I don't know how, how tough it was, I do know, know in the other committee, in the other communities that we talked to, it's a far more competitive process, which is sort of interesting, you know, there are people applying for positions that they want, and it's nice to see a town that has that luxury, and it really is a luxury, to be able to pick and choose among people who may have backgrounds in what we want, you know, and to give an example, and I had forgotten, but to know that we now have somebody with a legal background on RDIC, for the first time in a while, since Tom Dufoe stepped down, is, is a wonderful thing, and again, a luxury, we didn't get to pick and choose, it was, it was a good thing to see, the person who came to come to ConCom with a background doing conservation agent work, wow, that's sort of a sea change for us, and I think, you know, you've seen it, too, we all, we all kind of learn as we go, there's no classes for doing this, and you guys have developed your body of knowledge over years, you know, Sean, I think, is your newest member right now, and he's learning as he goes. And you don't have anybody who's an architect, right? You don't have anyone who is a, an engineer?
Yes.
You do, we have one engineer. Yeah.
Very lucky.
Very lucky, and there's the point, yeah.
And so I guess my other point was for the specific, to the Earthworks board, if that was, if Glenn was an appointment from AgCom, how did that appointment, representative appointment go, does AgCom support him in that role, because if AgCom is recommending him to represent them, then my kind of default is to trust AgCom, but I haven't had that conversation with AgCom either, so.
Well, and that was the same, that was the same situation as ConCom, because all boards and committees are actually approached for their recommendations for appointees for the coming term, year or term, so it's probably applicable to everybody.
Yeah, so they sort of recommend themselves, because what else could they do?
Right, but no, for Earthworks, it's, Earthworks is combined, representing a number of different committees, and so Glenn was representing AgCom on Earthworks.
Because he offered, you said?
Yes, because he knows about farming, and, and that's one of the things, we wanted somebody there that had a good idea, and make sure farmers are represented, that's the thing.
But he's in the constru, his primary means is.
But he raises animals still, I mean, he has animal, he has farm animals, so that's the reason why, so.
But it's, you know, ultimately, it's the board's responsibility to make sure that members, just like you said, make sure that members are fairly representing the entire town.
That's right, exactly.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, it's been read back, are there any further questions? I will do real call on this one, all in favor?
Stillings, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Quarter, aye.
DeBai, other nays, you have no vote?
Clark, aye, nay.
So, four in favor, one against. Okay, COA committee, we have quorum numbers, so basically, they are allowed by, by law to have three, five, or seven members, currently, there are five, and so their quorum is three, we just need to make a motion to that effect.
So you'll want to set the number, the composition, the number of members at five?
Okay, and then quorum total?
Yeah, quorum is the majority, yeah, you're setting the number of members.
Well, how many volunteers do we have for this commission, council?
There are five now?
There's three, but June is on the agenda for, from an alternate to a full, so that would be four full voting with one vacancy if it's set at five, and two alternate vacancies.
So.
My recommendation would be five.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to set the, the quorum at five, leaving a quorum of three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then to go in order, we have a request for an appointment, and you have that letter in front of you, June Willie. So if I could have a motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept June Willie's appointment onto the Rutland Council of Aging.
Second.
Thank you, are there any questions?
Is that through the remainder of this appointment cycle?
Yeah, it didn't say.
I told you in the second part of the meeting, twenty twenty, someone would expire, the remainder of that term's vacancy.
Okay, so, term to expire twenty twenty.
Okay, so she didn't want the vacant seat, she wanted to.
Become a full member.
There's a vacant.
Full seat.
One expired twenty twenty, one expired twenty twenty-one.
Right, so she didn't want the full vacant seat?
They didn't specify, so.
Oh, so you gave the shorter?
I just put it in the open.
Okay, oh, I see what you're saying. Gotcha, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you, you have a draft letter, very brief, in front of you, as a thank you for any board and committee member who resigned, to thank them for their service, and to ask for feedback, does anybody have any questions about it?
I just, I meant to email you, Abby, and I forgot, respond, on the second paragraph, responses are invaluable and greatly appreciated, could it be a valuable tool, or are valuable and greatly appreciated, so just some words, nothing there.
Good catch.
Great.
Well, which would be, a or tool?
Are valuable, are valuable and greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Grammar police here, do we start the last sentence with they? They can be submitted in writing. Preposition, no?
Feedback can be submitted in writing, or, I don't know.
Responses are valuable and greatly appreciated, period.
Yeah, feedback.
They can be submitted in writing to, I don't know, just, flags to me, I don't, where's the English teacher?
You know, you're inviting feedback, can't require it.
Feedback can be submitted in writing, I don't know, doesn't sound right to start a sentence with they.
All right, fine, I need to make a, I'll make an addition, too, can I add a last sentence, just, and again, thank you for your service to the town of Rutland, before, sincerely. Again, many thanks for your service to the town of Rutland.
You just changed it when I started, many thanks, many thanks.
Well, now we need a motion for this letter, oh my gosh, can I have a motion to approve it?
I'll make a, oh, go ahead.
No.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion to.
To amend it, to amend it.
To approve it as amended.
Approve, read it.
To approve as amended our Board of Selectmen thank you letter for committee members, board and committee members.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, next, the IT intermunicipal agreement.
So the town ended its, its contractual relationship with our former IT company on June 30th, so effective this week, the town has contracted with CM Geeks, this is a regional, this is a regional agreement with the town of Barry and the Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, the Barry, Town of Barry is actually the lead town on this agreement, the Barry Board of Selectmen has cuted the agreement, we are actually seeing some budgetary savings in this line this year, under this agreement, however, the contract is specific that any additional projects, like new computer hookups, things like that, new, and anything out of the ordinary, there would be a cost for that project, so that small additional appropriation that we have in the line will be helpful as we move forward.
Margaret, can you, how did we finally end with the NaQuag project?
The NaQuag project, according to Adam, was completed on Thursday, on, I'm sorry, no, on Wednesday, it was completed on Wednesday, I have emails since then, and I have in turn put out an email to see where we're at with it, I want confirmation from the district that the wireless, the wifi actually does work, so my hope is that someone from the district's technology department, Barry, or somebody else, can actually go there and check it out.
But that hasn't happened yet?
Not that I know of, I sent an email today.
Okay, and that final bill was submitted?
There was no bill for this, because the appro.
Sorry, the final invoice for work was submitted by Adam? No.
No, yes, it was submitted by Adam, but it hasn't been put on the warrant yet, it'll be on the next warrant.
It will be?
If the work's complete.
If the work's complete and working?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is it valuable to ask CM Geeks for an evaluation of the state of the system right now?
I think that we could do that, I think they'd be willing to do that.
That would be one of the first things they'd do, anyway.
Well, but they might not tell us unless we ask for it.
That'd be one of the first things they should do, anyway, come in and evaluate what we have.
Oh, what we have, right, but this is at the school, so, but this will be a special request, but I think that they would still do it, and they have been in evaluating what we have. I have four originals here, and our legal, our town council has approved the contract as to form.
Could I have a motion to execute the Agreement for Information Technology Consulting Services to CM Geeks Incorporated?
Sold.
I'll make the motion that the, oh, he moved, oh, perfect.
You want to second it?
Second.
Great, are there any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, one abstention.
You said so moved, I thought you said sold.
Am I slurred?
While you're signing, if I could just speak to the litigation on the, against the opioid pharmaceuticals?
Great.
There has not been any movement on that, so as far as, as updates, I don't have any updates on that, it's basically a class action litigation by a number of municipalities in Massachusetts, so I'll stay on that and see if there's been any progress.
Thank you. Okay, commercial soil screening operation. We have, you actually have two letters in front of you for that, one has already been delivered, so this is a notification, this was delivered by certified mail and hand-delivered to Cleveland Blair Jr. regarding the Ridge Road property at parcel 64C7, with an order to cease and desist on or before July 10th, 2018. Your second packet, which is larger, is in regards to Earthworks going on at Main Street, although this is a draft, and I, I think we should probably have a discussion, and we don't have anyone, I think, from Earthworks here tonight, and I know Peter is away, does this drafted letter specifically direct to the Main Street operation? Do we know?
No, it does not, it does not specify.
Okay, so how does it affect the Ridge Road operation, which has received its cease and desist?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
So, so Ridge Road has received a cease and desist for the work?
Yes.
And I'm not sure how many of you had a chance to read the legal opinion on it, but it seemed relatively black and white, so having read that, what I'm wondering is, this draft letter from the Earthworks board, is it an assumption that we should direct this specifically to Main Street, where we have issues of multiple zoning? This has nothing to do with Ridge Road?
The Earthworks board, the Earthworks board letter could actually be addressed for both of the parcels that were in question, because of the activity, because of the soil, because of the soil movement, right? It doesn't specify either right now, but it could reference both.
No, but the letter says to discuss the scope of activities and determine which of these activities require permits.
But maybe identify the scope of activities at the certain, at the certain locations.
Okay.
Right?
But then it says we further request that all activities that require a permit cease by August 1st, but Ridge Road has a cease and desist from the building department for July 10th.
That's right, it does. The Earthworks boards, my understanding, the Earthworks board's not even going to be meeting until, I believe, it's the 19th.
So, I, I guess the question is, in terms of arbitration, or who, who makes this final decision on Ridge Road? We have the legal opinion.
The, okay, so we, you have the legal opinion, you also have the cease and desist letter.
Right.
The recourse, the person this letter is addressed to has, is to appeal the building commissioner's decision with the zoning board of appeals, that would be the proper course.
Okay, but that's not stated by Earthworks.
Well, no, it's not stated by Earthworks, and that is not the recourse for the Earthworks board, the Earthworks bylaw does not give any, does not give any kind of recourse, they don't, they wouldn't go to the ZBA to appeal.
Right.
This is, the Earthworks board's function primarily, as I understand it, is as a permitting, a permitting agency of the town, or a permitting committee of the town, rather than, rather than strictly enforcement.
Okay.
Whereas the zoning enforcement officer, this is his job, to enforce the town's zoning bylaws, and the recourse under the statute is, is through the zoning board of appeals, appeal with the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so I'm still, I don't.
Do you want to align, are you looking to align the, the dates, is that what you're?
I'm, I'm looking, I guess, to ensure, to, to find out whether or not the Earthworks board letter is specifically directed to Main Street, where we clearly have questions of use permission, whereas Ridge Road, based on the legal opinion and the letter we sent, as far as I can tell, the Earthworks board would be not a part of this discussion, it's simply not permitted in that location, as the letter is written, and it's not grandfathered.
May I ask a question which might help?
Yes, you need to come up, name and address, please.
Brian Kennedy, 77 Ridge Road, right next to one of the properties in question, would it not be, seeing as Ridge Road is already cease and desisted as a zoning violation, the process, like you said, would be, they'd have to go to a zoning appeals, if they won their appeal, then they would be applying for a permit, and then that would go to the Earthworks board for permitting?
It would, it would go to the Earthworks board, because the movement of dirt, in this, in this particular case, does require permitting by the Earthworks board, under our bylaw.
So it seems unnecessary to have the Earthworks send a letter now, they have to appeal the zoning decision first, and then they would be dealing with the Earthworks board, is that?
I think the Earth, I think the intent of the Earthworks board letter is to have a conversation with the person who's moving the dirt, to, to remind that person, or to inform that person, that a permit is required under their bylaw, which is a totally, totally separate bylaw than the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, that just might imply that there is the possibility of getting a permit, but there's also the issue of zoning, before they can apply for a permit in the Ridge Road.
If they're shut down, yeah, if, if the operation is, is required to be shut down under zoning bylaws, it's not going to be need, a need to get a permit, so I understand, I think I understand what you're, you're saying, for the Main Street parcel, however, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the Main Street parcel, the Earthworks board at the very least needs clarification as to what that's being used for, where the soil is coming from, and going to, so, I don't know if you want to just keep it specific to the Main Street parcel for now?
I think so, because I think it would muddy the waters, so to speak, if the Earthworks letter gave an impression that somehow there was something the person could do under Earthworks to somehow then change what was written in the cease and desist from the building commissioner. So, and I'm not sure where to add that, but then, and then we have a few other things. So, the la- the last sentence, first paragraph, last phrase of it says, "has been made aware earth movement activities under your direction." I assume it's supposed to be, "has been made aware of earth movement activities under your direction within the town of Rutland," and then maybe right after that, I would put "at" and reference the Main Street parcel. Do you have another question? Here he comes. Hi.
Hi, my name is Sean Riley.
Hi.
I live at 73 Ridge Road. I'm part of the issue. So, I'm somewhat confused. You have a legal ruling from the town about what Blair and Martelli can and can't do?
We have a legal ruling regarding, and by the way, you can have copies of these. These are now public record. We have a legal ruling that regarding Ridge Road, that the, that use is not stated, is prohibited, is not grandfathered, and does not meet the 10-year, what was the term?
Statute, it's basically a statute.
Statute of limitations, because it's not a structure. So, for example, if they had built a structure and it had been sitting there for 10 years, it might be grandfathered in. It's, this isn't structural, this is a use. So, the legal opinion for Ridge Road is that this is simply not an allowed use, and regardless of how long it's been going on, there's no grandfathering.
Okay. But, they're allowed to apply for a permit to start up again?
Well, that gets back to-
In that, in that particular zone, no. In that particular zone, no, because that activity does not precede, is not grandfathered by our zoning bylaws. So, in that location, no.
But then they could apply to have it rezoned, correct?
They could.
They could. Yes, anybody could do that.
Reszoned.
Alright.
That hasn't happened in quite some time. That's a pretty big deal. When was the last time we rezoned? Does the town center? Right?
Sometime, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while. That's a big jump.
Okay, one last question.
No, it's fine.
Are they, do they need to have permits? If they do start up work again, do they need to have permits to work on the weekends, which they've been doing?
Well, as it stands right now, they've been issued a cease and desist. It was hand-delivered on June 26th. It gave them until July 10th to stop next week, and that's it.
Okay. And are there, are there any repercussions or violations for them working on weekends if they didn't have permits? And is that something that the town can look into or not look into?
I don't believe our zoning bylaw specified, or separate weekends from weekdays, and so-
And we don't have a noise ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, the cease and desist is applicable to any time. So, as of July 10th, if the operation continues, then they're in violation of the cease and desist order, and the town would have no choice but to take further action.
Okay. Thank you.
Did that answer everything?
Yep.
It did. Okay.
Thanks.
Alright, so, at the end of the first paragraph, you want to add at the Main Street parcel, so I'd give the map and parcel number of that.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, I guess, I have a question. I don't know that we have the authority to change this, but it's requesting that the owner meet with the earthworks board on July 19th, but is not requiring work to stop until August 1st, which was unclear to me.
They don't have authority under their bylaw to stop work, which is odd, but they don't have the authority under bylaw to stop work. They have the authority to issue permits only.
So then, so then, so then why even put that request in? Okay.
So, the request says that all activities that require a permit, so, cease, because they haven't obviously issued any permits for that. But, you're saying that although they have authority to issue those permits, they do not have authority to request the cease of work that does not have permits that they require?
They just can't demand it.
Yeah, I don't believe the bylaw, I don't believe the bylaw gives them that explicit authority. I can't-
And then where would that come from? The zoning board?
It would come from their bylaw. It would come from, and it wouldn't come from the zoning board. It would come from the planning board. It's not related in any way to the zoning bylaws. This is a general bylaw.
Right. No, no, but if, so if they're doing something that requires, if it's determined that they're doing something that requires a permit for which they don't have, can they just continue to operate then without that permit? Or where does that-
I want to actually look to see if we have noncriminal disposition under that particular bylaw. So, if we do, then they can have, then violations, they can impose penalties for violations, so I'm looking at that.
We absolutely have noncriminal disposition. It took us three tries.
For earthworks?
But-
Oh, not for earthworks. Not for earthworks. That's new.
We just set a deadline. Give them every opportunity to succeed in what you're asking. And then, if they let us down, then we go to town council and find out what...
Yes. Yes, but it's a bit of a gray area. So, Ridge Road didn't have much gray to it. Main Street does. Is that your question?
My question is, the original earth removal will allow them to move dirt from this piece of property, say, in Holden, to Rutland, and to any other projects that he has without permit. But now, with the new earthworks board, if he has any newer projects that he's doing, because I don't think you can go back and retro, retro, or can you?
Well, I-
That's my thing right now. Is he gonna go for a legal?
So, right, so the legal review of it basically said, "there are three separate zoning districts for this parcel on Main Street: Town Center 2, Light Industrial Office, and Residence R40. A soil screening, storage, or trucking operation or similar is not listed as being allowed in residence or town center, but in Light Industrial, it doesn't specifically say soil, but it says lumberyard, contractor's yard, building trade supplier, or other open-air establishment not stated elsewhere herein for storage, distribution, or sale at wholesale or retail of materials, merchandise, products, or equipment, provided that all open storage of materials and vehicles are screened from public view." That would make me think that it doesn't meet any of the three. And additionally, in reviewing the zoning map, the attorney felt that the majority, if not all, of the frontage on the Main Street property is actually in Town Center 2. So...
Ma'am?
Yeah.
So, what you just read here is the, is part of the opinion of town council, Amy, right?
Yes. Yes.
So, that's what she said. I mean-
Right.
I want to go by what her opinion is, in that it doesn't meet that definition.
She was informed that the unpermitted use has been in existence for approximately 20 years. Now, I'm looking at you, Dick, just because I think clearly in the past couple of months, the activity there has been ramped up significantly, for whatever reason. I've never seen it at the level it's at right now, which is maybe why it came to so many people's attention, including the butters. If zoning, there's questions about when the zoning ordinance was adopted in Rutland, and those questions still exist. Current version was adopted in '06, amended subsequently. We need to find out if the current replaced an existing. I think we know that it did. Town Center 2 is relatively new. So, depending on the answer to that, existing use may not be grandfathered.
There again, it may.
Right. If zoning was first enacted in Rutland in 2006, which that's not correct, it appears that this use could be grandfathered in this location. I think the question we have tonight would be, if the use is even allowed, and if it is, then a permit is required. We've only sent out a cease and desist for Ridge Road because of all the questions about Main Street.
Because years ago, we had the same thing. Matter of fact, I think it was Addison's wife, Virginia, was very upset the way the dirt was being transferred all over the place. If they finish a subdivision in another town, they have the right to bring that soil to their, to another town, to another subdivision from there that they own.
And we have a right to find out what it is. And we have the right to ask what it is, what you're bringing in.
Well, back then, no. They had every right to bring whatever soils they wanted back and put it into the next subdivision.
So-
You'll see that happening all over. I've seen it even right over the hill over here. It's coming from the other subdivision over here.
But today, we have the right to ask what's, what do you-
Now, you do, for any new subdivisions. Now, if it's an old subdivision that's been going on in Holden for a long time, you have the right to do it. But I don't, I have no idea. I mean, I don't think you have all the facts myself in front of you.
No, and we, and we know, of course, that a lot of it wasn't soil. Whether it was from Rutland or Holden, the last, you know, part, truckloads that were coming in a few weeks ago were millings, which, yeah.
I think you'll find it's a lot longer than 20 years there.
Oh, yes.
It's more like 40 or 50 years.
The earth removal bylaw still implies moving dirt from one location in Rutland to another location in Rutland. And I just looked up the noncriminal disposition. Yes, we do have noncriminal disposition fines in place for the earthworks board for failure to acquire a permit or any violation of terms of a permit.
So, I'm open to suggestions. I-
What's being asked of us? I see signatures here for not us.
Right.
Ones from Mr. Crane, and the other ones from our inspector.
Right. This letter from earthworks board is here for our review. We can offer suggestions. Mr. Crane is away this week.
So, and the bylaw, yeah, the bylaw does give the earthworks board the jurisdiction to govern the removal of soil, soil loam, sand, gravel, stone, or other earth removal. And it's, it's from any land in the town not in public use without first obtaining a permit. Therefore, from the board is provided in the following sections.
So, Margaret, I think the question tonight is, was the building department clear that they did not want to issue a cease and desist from Main Street as well?
Yes, not at this time because of the questions regarding grandfathering. Yes.
And how, how far have we gotten with Anita, I guess? On our zoning bylaw dates?
I don't want to answer that because I can't remember right now.
Alright, so-
Has this draft letter been run through town council, Mr. Crane's letter?
No, it has not. The cease and desist letter was.
Yep.
I'm good with that, so, if I go with that, I'm good with that.
Yep.
So, could we, could we suggest that earthworks letter go through town council with the amendment that we, the amendments that we made specifying that parcel and everything? Go through legal, see what they say, while, be sent out, assuming it's, it passes through legal and everything, while the town continues to investigate the zoning questions?
Yeah. I mean-
Go through legal.
Abby, hopefully, I don't know if you've been, any of the edits that were discussed, the addition of the location, the date, the questionable date, which doesn't align with the other, but...
Well, if it's an allowable use, he still needs a permit.
Right.
So, he's-
But that makes me wonder, but again, if they're meeting with the board on July 19th, why not, why ask him not to stop until August 1st? If he doesn't have a permit, and they need to issue a permit, then the building department should step in and issue the cease and desist. There's no point in suggesting that he stop August 1st if they don't have the jurisdiction to do that.
But they do, right, under the-
No.
Oh, they don't? I thought we'd-
They don't, they can request it, they just can't demand it.
Can't demand it. So... Lots of questions. Anybody else have questions to add to it? There's really nothing to be done. Can we maybe get an update on the 9th, we hope? Moving on. We heard about litigation of the opioid, which isn't moving, so our last thing, we have a Memorial Day committee appointment.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Right.
That is David Jaeger. You have a letter and an email.
He wants to be on the, serve in the Memorial Day committee.
Mm-hmm.
But we welcome him.
Yes. Can you make that motion?
I would make a motion that we welcome Mr. David Jaeger and appoint him as a member of the Memorial Day Committee.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Unless there's anything else.
We have all business?
Sure.
Can you do all business? Quick clarification, if I may, was brought to my attention this afternoon. So, last meeting, we, the board recognized a young man who did a great job, service to the community, joining the US Air Force Academy, and I purported out that he was likely the first person from our area to have been accepted to the US Air Force Academy. This afternoon was brought to my attention from appearance that 18 years ago, there was a, an individual, Anthony James Hunt Jr., who attended, graduated the Air Force Academy in 2004. It's not been verified. I have no reason to believe it's not on its face. If that's the case, just clarify the record that Mr. Connor Dill would be the second such person. Still worthy of recognition, and I thank both of them for their service, but certainly no misfeasance towards the service of Mr. Hunt, if that was the case. So, just clarifying the record. Thank you.
He gets to keep his certificate, though?
Certificate stands. I don't even think we signed it. We should sign us. We should talk about certificates at our work-
Alright.
At our working group.
You're on your list.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.